To order. We have a pretty wealthy agenda tonight and we're under a little bit of time constraints. So I'm going to call it to order and move it along a little bit. We are being recorded, Area 58, thank you so much. Is there any public participation? Certainly. Hi Sheila.
Hi. How are you doing?
Good, and you?
Very well. So I'm Sheila Vines, I'm a phrase reader, piece of mass, for the selectmen. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the committee and for everyone, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, everyone that has worked so hard to get our budget passed. And it is really exciting time and I wanted to come tonight to say thank you so much for all the hard work that went into it. The principals, it's hard work and if anybody should know, I think I know a little bit, I know for nine years being on it, but you know, I just know how hard it was and to have no one ask us a question at our meeting was really, you know, I just thought it really showed the transparency of what we do and that every day you're out there and you had these hard discussions and hard times, but you got through. And I just wanted to say thank you to the committee. I also want to thank the committee members that are coming off this year and really appreciate all your hard work with this and coming off the committees in the summer and we'll miss you. And I know that Chris Edwin is always here, so I just wanted to say everyone, thank you so much and thanks for your hard work during this time. We've got to buy it, so yay!
Thank you Sheila. Anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes, please.
I've made a motion to approve the minutes for our April 13, 2023 meeting.
Okay, any discussion of them?
I really enjoyed the format and the detail of level of minutes from the last meeting, so thank you very much for that.
Excellent. Alrighty, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Becky for a presentation by some students.
Sure, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Farrell and Mrs. Walker who brought some robotics students.
I'm Ted, Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Melo.
And Mrs. Melo.
And Mrs. Melo, sounds great.
They'll take over. Sure, while, you know, in the spirit of what we do with the robotics program, actually, I'm going to hand it over to the team and they're going to take over, make the presentation. That's what we do.
If he doesn't want us to cling too close to the side. Hello, I know you're on a time constraint, so we'll just give you a brief explanation of what we do in robotics and we'll pass it between each other and we'll just give you a small demo of our robot going back and forth. So first off, the competition of each year FTC is, it changes every year, it's played on 12 by 12 field, the robots have to be 12 inches by 12 inches and it incorporates communicating with members of your team and also other teams because you work together in pairs of two, going against two other people. And the challenge this year, we're stacking cones on two different posts and then also just moving cones into different playable areas that would create a chain. And this goes in controlled player, so we would control our robot and then also autonomous where we program our robot to move on its own. So now I'm going to pass it to Abby and she's going to give you a bit of just background on what we do like for our team.
So the first thing we do when we get together at the beginning of the season is we watch a video that is sent out by the competition FTC and building and planning and collaboration is a big part, so we get together as a team and we race for the test.
So for the past year, we've been keeping track of everything we've done throughout our notebook, so like if we do something a day, we'll keep like that ID down in notebook and say like, if we need like a part that we need for the robot, we have a Google spreadsheet that we could write down and then we can send it to people and they order it so that we can get the part right to us.
And after we plan for the competition that was designed by FTC, we watch video on how it works, we have to actually put together a robot, so we have, after we ordered the parts, we made our plan and we put together a design and after we make the design, we have to write code for it and we use Java for that to make that work.
For the camp stuff we do, like for hours, we do a summer camp where we bring kids from grade three over to the high school and they build their own robots, like build programming. It's our fundraiser and we do it since like get them interested in the, from there in high school, okay, and even in the middle school. But we don't do that since Lawrence, we kind of.
And that's just a little bit of outreach to, you know, get some people interested and every day we'll have a different challenge, so we'll have the kids come in and we'll basically just help them code a little bit, but we're also like teaching them how to do it and we'll use Legos and different parts and it all works together and then we'll have a little competition at the end of the day to sort of, you know, have some thought about them.
And then, so over the four past years I've been doing robotics and I have just really loved it. It's really opened up, like I've been able to improve as a person, just being able to communicate with my team members and the experiences having great going to competitions. It's stressful, but I've learned a lot throughout the years and I think it's a great experience that we, I just want to show other people. And then James.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that I've learned during my first year of this team is that, is like I've had love opportunities to like, to actually work on, like on making solutions to problems with in like real world scenarios. And I think we've also, we're also in a kind of different position this year as far as like our, as far as our bots and then transitioning into, into what we would like to do next I, I think that we, we need to kind of improve our coordination among different projects that are all that we look on at the same time and we also need to get some more specialists like training. So because electronics was kind of a bomb this year, but we managed to move through it and go off on our own.
And now that's out of the way, we can get to the exciting part of actually showing you our robots. So this is one of them that we made this year for stacking cones, so I'll put this just right here. Everyone can see that? It's good? Here we go. Round that around. Alrighty, so.
Oh wow, it's nimble!
So these uses, the, our robot uses metronic wheels which give it the ability to just grip on the Z axis as well as drive forward and backwards.
Wow!
And then we have a claw out front which we actually made with wheels, we just cut out the wheels and then just put the rubber on the outside because it helped actually grip the cone. And then we use a Viper slot with a string that you can see attached to the right side of the actual arm which brings it up to the designated height to actually get the cone onto the robot and then we, or onto the post and then we can just drop the cone there.
Wow!
And so this year, we made this a bit, a bit late in the season, so it was a bit harder to actually compete, but it went really well, we learned a lot of things and overall it was just a great experience this year. And then we have another robot that we made this year from the freshmen, so we did, we separated the teams this year into the seniors and then just the underclassmen, just so they can see what we're doing, they help us incorporate and see how we work and our ideas. And then they went and built their own robot and just used the experiences they learned with us to apply to their own robots, so once we leave, they have something to take from it. And so you guys want to drive it around and maybe just give a description of what is going on?
Uh, so this one's not working right now, this one's happening, but generally this robot, it takes more to stand defensive stance than that one, we use it to maybe push up cones, push cones and save people.
And then if anyone has any questions or if anyone would like to give it, like drive it around.
I'm afraid to. Oh my god, I'd love to, but.
And so if there's no questions, we're going to pass it to the middle schoolers and their robotics team.
Can I just ask you folks to just give us your names and then I, I have some comments after, but we'll let the middle schoolers.
Yeah. So I'm Jake.
I'm Sammy.
I'm Matthew.
Caleb.
I'm James.
Excellent. Do you want us to wait to ask questions or give comments or?
Uh, it's whatever's best for you guys.
Do you mind if I, I'm full of comments, can I take a moment?
Yeah.
Let me just say when I said we needed to move through the agenda, you folks are the, you folks are the subset that I would not move through quickly. No, it's important and we, some of us have been doing this a very long time, some of us are newer to it, but we, we sit here night after night, year after year, for you. Above and beyond everything else, it's for you folks, so when you come and show us something like this, what you've been working on, we love it because it brings home really why we sacrifice time with our own families to, to do this sort of work. If I can take two minutes, I have so many comments and I, I don't mean to jump in front of anybody else. First of all, you did a wonderful job of speaking and introducing us to your, your pieces of, of this. You're cultivating interest in younger students and even younger than middle school age and that's fantastic. Colleges seek out robotics students, students that have been in clubs, participated, so you're a sought after entity. This is wonderful and I'm surprised at how nimble it is, it's really, it's very wonderful. And I loved that you took a piece of tire and used that rubber for the claw, you're being, you know, you're using a lot of ingenuity and thinking on your feet. You mentioned competition and teamwork, if you do go on to college, every single course you take is going to have teams involved in it, everything imaginable has teams and it's so important to be able to work as a team. Competition, you folks are saying you're in competitions, it's a little stressful. Life is a competition, get used to it and the more you can experience it through something you love and gain that exposure, all the power to you, it's a, it's a wonderful thing to experience now, it will position you well. And Abby, your robot didn't work, but you spoke very eloquently and you, you, you know, you were thinking on your feet and you explained it very well, so you, you covered that very well for, for the team, so thank you. So that was me, I usually let the committee speak before I do, but I was sort of excited, I wanted to get my comments out, so. Anybody else for any comments on, on this part of the presentation?
As a STEM teacher, the thing I was most impressed about with your presentation this evening was your poise and your public speaking skills and the evidence that came through that you don't just say that you work as a team, you demonstrate that this is the way you present. Very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're a very impressive group of, of young folks.
And thank you all for your time too and things that you dedicated, it really helped us like just have an actual team and I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, you're very, very welcome. And now we have another group.
Hi, I'm Gavin. So we're building a robot for Vexer Robotics. Vexer Robotics is a competition where you use pieces, we use metal pieces to build a robot for a competition. This, this year's competition was you, you have to pick up discs, you have to have, have a robot pick up discs and then try to shoot them into a hoop.
Wow.
And yeah, so we have this robot here, it's not completely finished, but it's as much as we can get in, it's as much as we can get done for right now, so.
Okay, so basically the story of how we made this was that we started out as two separate teams with two different ideas and, but after one, one of those teams, the team that I was on, realized that our idea wasn't allowed, we just sort of worked on the same idea as the other team. And basically what happened was only, they had a pre-built base and I was working on the conveyor and that went on until the club was like temporarily canceled and it, you know, we weren't really knowing when it was going to come back, but when we did eventually come back, we were the only people who had stayed and everybody else had quit the club. And then basically what happened was that we joined together and then we started actually working and we created the, and then we put the base and the conveyor together and we added the belt and we, there was a lot of maintenance to do because there were a lot of problems that we needed to fix with it.
So I guess we're going to show you the robot, it's.
It's not the finest, it's not the finest robot, it's, it's getting the carpet a lot, so it can't really. Oh, yeah, watch out.
Oh, it's cool!
So what it's supposed to do here is that it is supposed to scoop up and then it's going to, not perfect, not perfect. And then it's able, it is technically functioning. So it drives around in all different directions, like a robot robot and it can go down and up, there's also a section under the scoop where you could score points where this robot is mainly for, where it could just scoop up like multiple discs and put them back down into that section like that and you could pick them back up with a bit of effort. Just kind of. Yeah, you know, it, it is like, like we've stated, isn't it the most perfect robot in the best way that Will here would describe it, is that it's easier to drive backwards and forwards here. Yeah. It's an interesting specimen.
Now, what are, what are your names?
I'm Gavin.
I'm Jijia.
I'm Will.
And I'm Nolan.
Excellent. It's not perfect, but you don't want to start out with perfect, part of the experience is trial and effort and, and improvement and growth, that's awesome. It, it's an awesome robot right now as it stands.
Yeah, it's awesome, we actually got it working because it kept disconnecting and the controller kept like freezing and shutting off, so it's great that we actually got it to work.
Yep, yep, you gotta, you gotta work through problems. Excellent, it's, it's wonderful, you young men did a wonderful job presenting it to us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick, I know that I do like to hand it over to them, I appreciate all the work that they've done. I just want to mention that in your folders, there's also a short video from Jonas Sylvia who does work on programming too, so he just couldn't be here tonight, he could make it, but he really wanted to participate, so I think we'll take a look at what he's set up on programming. That would help out with the picture of the.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All of you enjoy your summer.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. They did a great job. Pokey joke. Now back to, back to work, I guess.
Back to the not fun stuff.
Okay, we hope, we have an OpenSciEd grant.
Yeah, Mr. Farrell's going to speak on that. Is this the science coordinator, do you want me to introduce him?
Yeah, please, if you can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Farrell, would you like to produce, to speak to the next agenda item, which is the OpenSciEd grant curriculum program, which is on the subject of just an update in science curriculum, so inside the folder, there's some background information that Mr. Farrell provided, but he's going to talk a little bit about this update to the science curriculum, is a change to the science curriculum, so we wanted to bring it to the school committee for their support and to answer any questions that you might have.
Alright, so thanks for having me here tonight, so this, this was a process that's been occurring over the past couple of years, this curriculum called OpenSci has been out for a while, but last year, the sixth grade opted into this grant and so they were starting to roll around it, talking to seventh and eighth grade teachers, need to build some, some time and some effort around it, we did that this past year and now we're very excited, so we opted into it. Basically what OpenSci is, is a new, it's a new, it's not a new curriculum, it is a new curriculum, it's a new format, it's our old standards, the 2016 standards, but just in a whole new format and it's not, it is groundbreaking in the sense that it's a new way of instruction, but it's not so revolutionary that people aren't doing it. What the OpenSci provides for you is a tremendous amount of support behind the scenes, so when we opted into this and we got the grant, so it was $42,000 total, about half of that goes towards supplies for the classroom, the other half helps to pay for ongoing PD over the next three years, so in the summertime, during the school year, and then we will have some expertise come in from Boston College, who are overseeing the program, to help facilitate to work with our teachers. Basically it's just a paradigm shift in how we instruct, so again, we typically always instructed and telling students stuff and we still sort of have a tendency to go back to that, and this really puts the onus on the students to do the investigation, to do the questioning, to do the discovery, to do the talk. And so could you do that on your own? You could, but there's a lot of stumbling blocks and there's a lot of, oh, what if, and I don't feel sure that I can. When you, when you opt into this and you get the support of OpenSciEd and MassSTEM Hub and this cohort and this network of teachers across the state, teachers have a resource to reach out to and then they have, when they go to PD, they're there with other teachers and those teachers help support them and their understanding, when they have someone to call on and when they say something's not working. And they also see that there's a lot of other teachers and other schools doing this and they feel more empowered that this is really a great program. So it's been fed, it's, it's being done nationally, Massachusetts is super supportive of it, the Department of Education is, is super supportive of it and I liken it a little bit to the project lead, the way work I've been doing over the past few years here, the middle school and the high school, same type of thing, just tremendous amount of behind the scenes support from teachers to empower them to do the best job they can in the classroom and that's what the teachers saw over the past year, they, they knew what it was and they're like, yeah, that's nothing special, that this past year we really dove into some site visits, then some experts come in and talk to us and they were like, okay, you got us, this is, this is really the route we want to go and because of who's helping us, we'll get there. And so that's, that's where we are right now. So we're excited, so we got three more years of work, but it's going to be good work and we're going to see a change in the kids.
And the grant is for the three-year process?
Yes, you have to, you have to opt in for the three years, you can't just, you have to sort of commit, and so the teachers committed, and that's tough for them to say, I'm going to commit for three years to something and this is what I'm going to do every summer and during the school year and again, there was some hesitation at the beginning, but as they saw more, then there was no hesitation after a while, it's like, okay, let's, let's do this. So I'm excited and then in this, we'll help because sixth grade's already doing it, again, it's the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, this was rolled out in middle school, it's now going down to the elementarys, they're piloting programs there, they have a high school program later on as well, but right now, the, the middle school is where the meat and potatoes of OpenSci is right now. That was my.
Any, any questions, comments?
Just one quick question, so do the teachers get content area PDPs as part of the training?
Yes, they, they will for the training, they're day-long training, so we can, we can get them those, yeah.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, moving on to compensation rates for substitute custodian and food services?
So the reason why I asked to have this item on the agenda this evening was several weeks ago, there was no questions about sub rates for custodians and food service workers in various districts and what I was informed was that in Halifax and in Kingston, the sub rates were tied to step one rate to the union contract and Silver Lake, there was a flat rate that was independent of that. What concerned me was that none of those agreements, to my knowledge, were actually codified anywhere. So I wanted to go to the school committees, this obviously is a decision that you would all make and I will make your decision. So Megan Airpols, the food service director, did come here at the beginning of the school year and asked that the food service sub rates be tied to the step one rate, so that is what's happening this year, I don't know if it's something that you'd want to roll off, definitely, but the substitute custodian rate was at $19 an hour, I don't know how or when that was set, but I just wanted there to be some discussion and some clarity, your step one custodian rate is $24.98, so that would be a pretty significant increase if you were to tie it to that, but I just wanted to make sure that other than us relying on institutional memory, like this committee was making a decision, I will want to pay as custodians and as food service workers who are serving the substitution.
So again, for my benefit, Silver Lake is doing what now versus?
So the other communities have, it had been a practice and we now formally codify it, to tie the substitute rates for custodians and food service workers to step one of the contract. Silver Lake, again, based on what has been reported to be from institutional memory, had a number, $19 an hour that was, I'm assuming at some point, somebody established that, I don't know how, I don't know when, and I don't know if that's documented anywhere. So we could, you know, continue with that rate if we wanted to, just document it, you could tie it to your step one rate, you could count somewhere in, in between, I think for the other communities, it was a pretty simple decision because it was like, this is what we've always been doing, there wasn't going to be any additional costs, and so Kingston and Halifax had just voted to tie those to step one. It's a little bit of a more complicated decision here because that rate is significantly higher and we don't employ hours and hours and, you know, I don't think this is going to be a huge expense, the overall cost of budget. More than anything else, I just want to make sure that whatever we are doing, it's a decision that this, this committee has made and that is documented and codified somewhere because I think we were relying on institutional memory as opposed to some formalized policy.
Yeah, and we need to stop doing that, I agree with you. Any thoughts on this one?
Is there anything that would require us to take a vote on this tonight or is this something that we could think about and maybe potentially vote on in the future?
I see no compelling reason for this to be addressed immediately, I think with your blessing, what I would continue to do is we would continue to pay people $19 an hour until we reach a different decision, but at least at the very least now, I've brought this to your attention, you know what we're doing, you know, if you'd like to move in a different direction, that's fine, but I think even having this conversation makes me feel more comfortable to know that this is now within my.
And it's not that I'm against the notion, it's just with the idea that we need to be out here by seven o'clock, if we get into debate about this, it might just make more sense to table this for this evening and move it to unfinished business projects.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Especially where there's only, what, three weeks left of the school year?
Yeah.
There's, yeah, we've got plenty of time.
Do you need a motion to table the discussion?
Jason, do we need a motion to table the discussion, or can we just, can we just put it on?
The chair can do it at her discretion.
Okay.
Yeah. Karen, can you put that under, on the next agenda? Okay, please, thank you. No, I completely agree. Okay, this one might end up falling in the same bucket, but, okay, moving on.
Sure, for the preschool administrator? Thank you, so as everybody is aware, we've been working with DESI to be clear about which programs are Silver Lake programs, and which ones are operated by other towns, it is our move in this next year, we've been advised that we need to essentially incorporate preschool into Silver Lake, so the PK preschool will be operating as a Silver Lake program in 23-24, because that will be operated sort of under the auspices of Silver Lake, there's a, we will need an administrator to basically be the PK principal, that's not something that we can assign to Kingston employees to oversee, that position also requires a, a team chair for the students who may need IEPs and those meetings facilitated, there will be, there will not be a cost to Silver Lake for proposing this position, in the sense that these, this, the positions would be borne out through the PK, pre-K revolving account, so essentially, when our students attend the preschool, they're charged tuition, and that tuition would fund the cost of the program, we would anticipate a tuition increase because of these added pieces, we have a little more detail on that if that's needed at this time, and previously, the management of these programs came from grants, and we don't know the future of these grants, so it is a recommendation that we create the pre-K principal position to oversee the preschool for 23-24.
Go ahead, Jason.
Not against the idea of doing this, what's the compensation rate for that position?
We've, the number that we're you-
Does it go through with the rest of our brand-new principals, that is step one for Silver Lake, or is it of a different structure?
It has, it has a different structure, as it's been proposed, there's, at this time, seven classrooms, I believe, in the, in the preschool, so they would have, we have a job description, is that in the packet?
Does not look like it.
Okay, there's a job description that's been, that looks a lot like a, the responsibilities of a principal, but given that the number of classrooms is slightly lower, it would not be directly in line, it would be a competitive administrator salary, but not to the level of somebody who's running six or seven grade levels. It's outside the, I'm sorry, and to be clear, it's outside the SLAA contract, sorry, that's probably the answer.
Would it be a 220-day-a-year contract, or a little bit beyond, or?
We proposed the job description to affect 220 days, this person would also complete the evaluations for all of the staff that work in the preschool.
Are we looking, what licensure are we hoping for this person to have?
Administrator.
What kind?
Well, that's a great question, I think we left on the job description, it open to either, it could be a special education administrator, it could be assistant principal principal administrator, just to make sure that we're capturing the different potential categories, but obviously, of the utmost importance is the experience with children ages three through five.
Obviously, I know I might interfere the discussion, but I'll make the motion to approve the creation of this position as stated by our rank.
Is there a second, we can continue talking about it?
One second.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there other questions or comments? Did you have a question?
I did, I was just curious, I was kind of was piggybacking off of Jason's comment about compensation, you had mentioned that it wouldn't be a hit to the budget, but it would be absorbed through the tuition expense, and I just was curious, I know you can't give a number right now, or I assume you can't, but do you think that this would be a significant increase to families, or something that might be more easily absorbed, for lack of a better way to say it?
Can I talk about the ESM?
I think we just put it all on the table.
Okay, so historically, I'm not quite sure the history of it, but our extended school year funding has been tied to the preschool revolving account, and the extended school year program is ages three through 22, so what we've been doing is taking a look at how that has impacted the preschool revolving account, and what that would look like if we were to pull out ESY from the preschool revolving account, and what financial impact that would have on the communities, so for example, Kingston, the town of Kingston, separate from preschool and our substantially separate DLC programs, ESY is about $24,000 for the town of Kingston, so if we were to take that out of the ESY, I'm sorry, out of the preschool revolving account, that is a better, more accurate look at what that preschool revolving account has for funding, Halifax and Denet combined is about $17,000, middle school, high school runs about $20,000, so again, this is separate from what preschool summer costs, as well as what our Kingston DLCs and our high school pathways program, and, and other substantially separate programs that we can appropriately charge to those revolving accounts, so when we look at what the potential increase to the tuitions would be, we've calculated it to be roughly $50 per student.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, I am going to stop for a moment, we have about 16 minutes.
That, that clock is very fast.
Is it?
Six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven.
Oh, okay, I feel better.
Yep.
Oh, feel much better, okay, alrighty, moving on then.
I'll be really quick.
Oh, I apologize, going by this, I started to have a little-
For staff and school updates, I just wanted to honor three staff members that have retired or given their retirement, Chris Daly, social studies teacher, Peter Janice Bracken, who has retired in the fall, a special education teacher, and Carol Beck did her last show at the auditorium this past weekend, was excellent, we do have a youth football flyer on the drive through Silver Lake Youth Football, we want to advertise this to our students, and then I also have a field trip donation from Mayflower Church for $2,420 that we donated, so some students could go on a field trip without cost.
Oh, wow.
To approve your flyer?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to accept the donation from the Mayflower Church.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
I don't have any items on the agenda, should be my part to help you at seven o'clock. None of them needs a lift.
Great job with the car show, and the related CTE programs.
And everybody go to the concert tonight, too.
Yes.
Excellent, alright, well, thank you for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
Silent partner.
Can I just add a little bit to that?
Sure.
That if you do have a minute to walk over to the, to the art show at the high school, Hannah Close, our teacher, told me that they've never had more art to display, and so if you do have an opportunity and you're not, to just walk over there and check it out, they spend a lot of time, it looks excellent, so just a plug for the great work happening.
Yeah.
With the arts.
Wow, fantastic.
Phenomenal, I saw it today, the signing they did for the athletes, it's fantastic.
Wow, what time can we get over there, Jill?
We'll be over till ten, the concert will probably run until about eight.
Yeah, excellent, very good, thank you, thank you. Alrighty, Christine?
Thank you, I was going to add that tonight is also a concert, so we're going to go over there afterwards, it's my nephew's last concert, so I'm going to check that out.
Oh.
And then next week is Chicago, the presentation in Chicago, just looking at the full calendar, in your package tonight, you do have a copy of the financial, as happens every other, we have some areas that are, you know, are starting to serve some concern, but most of the deficits that we have are, as you know, we do the budget as best estimate of what we believe is going to happen, and I don't live in a perfect world, so it's do the best we can, but there are some areas, within, most of the deficits that we have will be easily absorbed within the category, so that will, within the, the same type of activity. There are a few areas I did want to bring to your attention that are starting to show cracks, one of the areas is under the high school, forced the substitutes, both of our substitute lines, middle school and high school, are both showing signs of stress, and we've had a struggle to fill those positions, and there may be some savings over the teaching line, because there are many folks that were on leave, and there was some unpaid portion of these, so that may offset some of that for that category, another area is also homeless transportation, this year has been a real struggle for many reasons, and both middle school and high school do have a deficit, but will, and that will continue to grow some through the end of the year, and as I've mentioned in some other communities, that we do receive a reimbursement, but it doesn't come into the following year, but the thing for Silver Lake is that it does come into Silver Lake, not through town, so it does come into Silver Lake, and that ends up acting as additional revenue that we receive in the year, so that would feed towards our access and efficiency at the end of the year, so we do get the full benefit, and right now, we're getting 100%, so it's, that's helpful, that's helpful to us, you'll notice under the food service area, there's a deficit, what that is, is we have not, we're in the process of building Kingston and Halifax to the portion of our director's salary, so once those commit, that will also have that deficit, and it'll be, it'll come pretty close to zero, and the only other thing I wanted to mention is in the utility accounts, there are a couple utilities that both have deficits, fortunately, we knew that early enough to build that into our budget for '24, and with the utilities I've talked about, we do have a contract for both our gas and electric, that we're, we're committed to 2025 on that, which is helpful, but it doesn't control the distribution costs, it only controls the cost of the supply, so there are some of those costs that we just can't, we don't have the ability to wrangle those in, so, but fortunately, those items were known early enough to build into the budget for next year, and that's all for now, unless there are any questions?
Any questions?
Motion to approve Christine's financial report.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, super, assistant superintendent?
Thank you, so the curriculum assessment instruction update, Mr. Farrell provided the overview of Open SIAID, so thank you for that, the district update is, as Ms. Vaughn explained, the Silver Lake budget has been passed in Halifax, Kingston, and last night in Plimpton, that includes the middle school SRO and the HVAC unit at, at the high school, so we appreciate all the support of the towns and getting that budget passed and the support of the committee, so thank you. That is all for the district update.
Excellent, yeah, it was, it was a good year, the towns, the towns supported us well, it was a really good year.
Well, you can pat yourself, self on the back, Madam Chair, for conducting this committee's business, so we could all present at town meeting, and be without, you know.
I appreciate that, definitely a team effort, the, the young men talked about teamwork earlier, and this is certainly a, a team effort, new business, I don't believe we have anything under new business, but I wanted to take a moment, as Sheila had mentioned earlier, we're saying goodbye to some, some team members, Laurie Kastner had stepped in and filled in for a few months from Kingston, I want to thank her for coming on board and trying to fill that void, I would say that she has an excellent background to join a school committee and contribute when she has, you know, the, the time in her life to do that, I think she'd be an excellent asset to a school committee again, so I wanted to thank her for doing that, as Sheila had noted, you know, Chris stepping in after being on the committee for a number of years, and, and filling a void for the year when he hadn't really planned to, again, giving it his all for the, the last year, I wanted to thank him again, I'm disappointed that, that he wasn't here the last couple of meetings, coming back to fill Chris's seat, well, a seat, is Mark Guneboni, and I have to say, it says something about the communities, as well as working on the Silver Lake School Committee, which I think is a very unique experience, you have members that, that leave to go on to do other things, and when a seat is open and we need, you know, members again, you have people that are willing to come back and, and bring their experience, and, and Chris helped us for the last year, and, and Mark's bringing some wonderful experience he's had on this committee, he's going to hit the ground running for us, so excited for, for both of them, and we'll miss Chris. Now, Summer, Summer, you have, and maybe not everybody knows this, but you've sat on two committees and played a dual role for a number of years, you give, you've given so much of your time and so much of your energy, and, you know, your experience has been wonderful, you're very passionate, and I, I have to say, one of the things that I've experienced with you over the years is, you're the committee member who's not afraid to bring up the sensitive topic, ask the hard questions, you're very thorough in your review of the topics and the agendas and the material, and you're, you're not afraid to maybe ask what's on other people's minds, and I've always appreciated your boldness and your willingness to maybe step in uncomfortable territory sometimes, because the committee's decisions and the committee's discussions are better for you having done that, and I, I commend you, and I appreciate you having done that for this committee.
Thank you. I'm like way emotional, so I'll just keep it wicked short, but thank you for saying that in a very kind way, because I know it doesn't always come across that way, and I appreciate everybody's ability to sometimes bring me down a notch, and kind of at least entertain what I'm trying to convey, and I have to say, I, on a personal note, have grown tremendously, and like politically and as a, a person, just from serving on, on these committees, both in Halifax and here in Silver Lake, and I owe a lot of that to all of you, because you definitely helped me grow on a lot of, on a lot of levels, so I'm grateful for that, so thank you for, thank you for, you know, being so wonderful to work with, and thank you for everybody for asking me to represent their voice here, and you're right, I am a very passionate person, and, and I, although it is sometimes difficult and very nerve-wracking, I, I do think it's important sometimes to bring up those, those tough things, so thank you for giving me the platform to do that, because at the end of the day, we're all here for the same reason, we all want what's best for our children, our students, the district, and the taxpayers that we represent, so thank you.
Absolutely.
And you all do a fantastic job, so keep going.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, thanks.
Old business, the regional agreement, so our attorney, Russ, has done one further edit, one further revision, I'm hoping that this is going to be pretty final, we have a meeting with DESI next week, I think it's the 25th, yeah, is that the 25th?
Yeah, it's the 25th.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that we have gotten a version that is something that can move to their final legal review, so that we can move for, you know, move on with this over the next couple of months, so more to come on that, and I'll give you folks an update after that meeting on Thursday. Reports of special committees. Reports of special committees.
After you ask me to lay, could I make a motion that we take the items out of order and safety facility fees and revenue to number two on the list?
Yes. Yep. You made a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All righty.
Is it me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'll be brief. So first, I'll just say thank you to Summer and Chris for their service on the committee. You know, it's very important to our students to be able to step up, so thank you for that. It was great seeing the kids here with the robotics team, and I appreciate the committee's support in funding those positions. I'm not sure if everyone remembers, but they were originally volunteer positions, both the high school and middle school, and it was relatively recently. I hadn't been contracted, decided ended the position, so thank you for, for seeing the value of that and being willing to support it. As you know, and you're probably as relieved as I am, we've resolved most of our contract negotiations. In particular, I'd like to thank the subcommittee for how smooth the teacher negotiation went, and I hope that we can continue that in the future. It's nice having it not hang over everyone's head into the next year, so thank you for that. And with that said, we do have one more, which is the support staff. I know we have two meetings scheduled, and we do have a lot of those workers working over the summer. That contract expires July 1. It may not be possible to get it settled before that, but we'd like to make a go of it, and we're going to be coming to that next meeting ready to work. And, you know, I know we've got two, maybe we can squeeze in a third before the end of the year, and, you know, fingers crossed, it would just be a little simpler for everyone if we had that sorted out before July 1. So I'm hoping we can get that done. So that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
So I appreciate the committee's authorization to allow me to speak to the three towns above our administration building, and potentially using some of the funds from the debt that's going to be falling off from our two major buildings here on campus in a couple of years. I have spoken with Plington. I've also spoken briefly with Halifax. Haven't met yet with Kingston on that. But we do have some additional plans coming through this month or in early June, so I've asked Jill to put the safety facilities fees and revenues meeting at the beginning of our closeout meeting, so we can go over those plans as we continue to realize the promise of creating a new admin building for our central office staff. In addition to that, tonight, I come before you to ask you, how many times have you asked yourself, why is there not a traffic light on Route 27, Lake and Station? Well, we were all trying to get the kids back to school full-time in May of 2021. An audit came up that was authorized by MassDOT that did say that there should be a traffic light at that location. I did ask for this audit to be put in your packets this evening. Tonight, I'm seeking a motion from you, very similar to the one that you gave for me to work with the three towns on the admin building, to act as the official agent of Silver Lake Regional Schools in pursuit of the installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Route 27 at Lake and Station Street. This would allow me to talk to highway supervisors, boards of selectmen, finance committee, state legislators, and congressional members up at Capitol Hill. It is a multi-jurisdictional road. You authorizing me to act as the agent would allow me to do some of that legwork for us to try and get technical assistance, some special legislation, and potential earmarked funding to help the town of Kingston realize this project.
I'll make the motion to authorize Jason Frazier to represent Silver Lake as an authorized agent.
I will happily second that.
Thank you for everything that you do when it comes to these things. You, you often step up to the plate to represent our district when it comes to these matters, and it's very much appreciated.
I appreciate the support, and it's because of your support that I've been able to step into positions that amplify our voices here in Halifax, Plington, and Kingston. I was just recently named to be a member of the Local Governance Advisory Commission, which means monthly, we're the governor, and that's a direct result of the positions you've put me in. So I'm honored that you trust me and you've given me these opportunities, and I'm happy to pay it back to our, our students and our citizens in any way I can.
I didn't realize you had time to wear another hat. That's a lot.
Was there a second? You seconded that, right? Any further discussion on that? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason.
I would also say that I plan on working with Becky in pursuing, realizing a full-time status for our school resource officer here at the middle school. That's something that I am going to seek to discuss further and make sure the research bears out that cost that we would ask our towns to bear through that subcommittee work as well over the course of the next year.
Yeah. No, that's important. I agree.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Okay. Administrative review?
Nope.
Mm-hmm. CTE?
No report.
Okay. Chairman's report? I have no correspondence that, that you folks don't have. Legislative agent report?
So the Senate Ways and Means budget came up, and I was disappointed to see the number they had for regional transportation. It's still more than we got last year. It's still more than the governor, but the House had been much more generous. So conference committee this year is going to be extremely important. That's when the two chambers try and reconcile their, their budgets before they send it on to the governor. I did speak with Senator, Secretary Gorkowitz, who's in charge of the state finances after we missed the revenues in April. State benchmark month is April. That's when all our income taxes are filed in the state. It's 31% below expectations. That needs to be taken into account, because last year was a bellwether year. We've never seen revenues come in this high, and we're still on track to meet and exceed the amount of money we were planning to take in during fiscal year. Secretary Gorkowitz assured me that the budget that Governor Healy designed does not rely upon capital gains, which is where we saw a lot of those declines in the state revenues last month. So stay tuned. I can hear John Creed in the back of my head telling me to pay attention to the numbers. John, I am.
Thank you, Jason. Nothing to report? Are we going to need an executive session tonight? Because I-
There is one. We've done that.
We put it, but I don't think we're going to need it. Yep. Okay. PAC?
So I actually have a lot to report. We had our final meeting of the year, and we got a lot done. We had the second read and approval of the budget. So the total budget for next year is $10,79,000, $79,169.64. The big news, I mentioned this at our last meeting, but it's, I got it confirmed, the tuition for next year is frozen at this year's level, so there will be no increase in tuition to PAC. That's, there is a cumulative surplus of $500,000 due to both an increase in enrollment and a $100,000 grant from the state. We also approved next year's school calendar and the 23-24 student handbook. And for anyone who's interested, the Pilgrim Academy graduation is on June 2, and the seaside is on June 9. That's all I got.
Excellent. Wow. You went through that very efficiently, top-est. Treasurers' report?
There were no warrants for tonight, but I can report under single senior two warrants, though. Do you want to do that one now?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
On May 15, we have warrants that were electronically sent to the superintendent in our subcommittee of Paul, Jason, and Lucas. We have 14 regular warrants for $1,568,836.21. Two student activity warrants of $7,923.21. Two payroll warrants of $1,784,792.33, a total of $3,360,720.86. All warrants were signed electronically, returned, and now being submitted. Thank you. These folks didn't record time. I think it was four hours between all of them. Nice job.
I, I have to tell you, what helps as well is Karen sends out an email triggering us that it's, yeah, which is extremely helpful, to be honest with you.
To be on the lookout for it.
Yes.
Well, thank you. It worked.
Yep.
Because we were a little late game, but we're having a problem with our printer.
Oh, really?
So we got them done for Friday morning, got that out to you folks, and he's got it back right away, so thank you.
Excellent. Good. Thank you. Okey-dokey. Union 31? No report. We just had a meeting last, last month, last time we met. We got, we're coming in right on time.
59.
So no executive session needed this evening. Dates to remember: May 29th, Memorial Day long weekend; June 1st is an early release day; June 2nd is our graduation, Silver Lake's graduation; June 14th, last day of school; and July 13th is right now our next Silver Lake meeting. We, we may do something before then. I'm suspecting we will be doing something before then, but right now for the books, it's, it's that date. And I-
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Your final motion.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.